All right. Morning, everyone. Happy birthday, Todd.
Yay, happy birthday.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, so I wasn't here too much on Friday and stand ups get trickier and trickier for me to run when I'm spending more time away from the full sessions. John may jump in a little later. He had a migraine, text me at like five in the morning that he probably wasn't gonna be here to start stand up. So Jerry, I'm going to kick it off with you and we'll go from there.
Yeah, cool. So Friday, started working on some cleaning up scripts. Uh, one script I have done is one that uh every day will run and it will identify users without a phone number. And it will send out a admin report. Right now, I'm just sending it out to myself. Uh, it'll identify if these accounts need to be merged or if there's something else going on, like the phone number isn't saving to database. And that script, I just have to kick off the cron job for next script I'm working on is called orphaned images. So we're gonna start doing this asynchronous upload stuff and for the asynchronous upload to work, we need a cleanup job so we don't just congest our cloudinary space with uh images that never got uploaded. So I'm gonna be running a script that checks all the images that were created for the past day. I'm gonna check it against the database and see if those line up. If they line up, they stay. If it exists in cloud area but not in the database, if it and if it was like a temporary image key, then it gets wiped from cloud area to safe space. Those are the scripts I have going now. Um, yesterday, when I say yesterday, Friday, we got the build out. There was an issue with the context and circle step. Like there was just a hardcoded user key that got slipped in there. And I don't know if the new build was pushed out yet. So that is.
It is.
Oh, cool. Cool. Okay, then it is. I still have on my board, I wanna continue. I need to actually start working on the SoundCloud integration. Danny, if you have time, if you can create me like a circles, actually, no, I could probably create one under my circles email unless you wanted to have access to the API key. Otherwise, I can just set up under my circles email and API key and we can just swap it out whenever you have time to make one.
Okay, go ahead. It's fine.
Okay, yep, sounds good. And um something that I thought on working on um, like an admin messaging utility. Seems like we're getting asked about that quite often, something that we can honestly just say like, hey, you're not being very circly. Um, I don't know if we should do that from circles buddy or if we should do that from like another another account, which I'll think.
I agree. I think we should use circles buddy.
Okay. Thoughts, Danny?
Uh, um, well, I was thinking maybe it should come from a little bit more of a bland type account like circles uh.
Circles admin.
Yeah, something like that. So where it's like very uh to the point and dry.
Okay.
Well, let's think about that one a little bit.
Okay, well, I could just determine the account after the fact. It doesn't
Okay.
block me. But uh, yeah, we can do that and I'll just have it like where I'll have a very simple chat interface where you can message. I just know people sometimes like to message the circles buddy and maybe we good to read those messages too.
Yeah, that's true.
Unless that's just gonna be for a separate dashboard.
Yeah, I haven't uh. How many messages does a circles buddy have?
Hmm. I just know it happens sometimes. I don't have a number. I can bring up a number, but it'll take a few minutes.
Bet a lot of it's from things being shared with it.
Uh, no, I don't think you can share with circles buddy.
No.
We should have it prevent it in those list.
Okay. That would be good to know.
Yeah, we, we like circles buddy, but it's, we don't want it to be discoverable. So John insists on any list that circles buddy is visible in, that it gets removed from.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, but I can imagine people would be messaging circles buddy if they need help.
Yeah, I can see that happening to you. I wonder how often that's happened.
Yeah, so we have that. Um, so we'll see, we'll see what happens there.
I would assume that circles buddy would be a chatbot if I wasn't a part of the circles team. Especially since we get that message when people first come into the app from circles buddy that lets you know how to use the app. I would assume that I could then respond to that and ask questions.
I agree.
I do too. And if it could actually be a chatbot, it would be really cool.
I would like to take something like that up when we have time for it. Um, the fun part of it is just feeding it data about circles and making sure it doesn't hallucinate and start coming up with random stuff because even if I use just chat GPT, it doesn't know how to use circles. So we'd have to start teaching it how to use circles for all these cases and just iterating upon training it and stuff.
Yeah, I actually uh talked to an investor for uh Barr on Friday and uh she was saying that she uh went to chat GPT to ask how to do something in circles. And it gave mostly right information.
Where the heck would it get that information from? Because we don't have like a, we don't have like a, you know, a conference page or something for this. We just have it, it would just be just communications, whether or like other social media. I mean.
I thought that there's like a web version that Google crawls. So if it would be crawlable by Google, I would think chat GPT would be able to have access to that kind of information.
No, we don't have, we don't have any, any like interacti- interactive circles things.
There's a website and then if it is able to crawl like we thunder updates or that have been public or um you know, anything that's been talked about on a number of the social media platforms combined, it might be able to get, you know, fairly close right now.
That's that, yeah, that's, that's possible, but as far as getting it directly from the source and official source, I don't think there's many ways it could do it and we just have to hand train it and iterate through it a lot.
For sure.
You have to al- I, I would almost have to create like a page where you know, like Chantel can talk to it like a customer and then she'll have like a view where she starts like punching in. No, this is how you do it. No, this is how you do it. And just like how you do all these things and it just gonna be continuously improving upon itself.
If it took all of mine and Chantel's and yours and John's messages we've sent to that maggot army chat and just studied those, like we've answered so many frequently asked questions to that audience.
Yeah, I also feel like on our website, we should have a FAQ page somewhere where it tells you all the different ways to use the app. Maybe we could even do like uh you, some YouTube tutorials as well and stick those in there so people can see it. Um, I see a lot of other businesses that do that, other software company.
Uh, well, I've seen people do even at the bare minimum and this almost requires nothing on my part is uh notion. Like an FAQ just built entirely in notion.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And you could put whatever you want. And you can make notion pages public.
Yeah, I was, I can see a future where you're talking to circles buddy and you're, and there are so many group chats in circles to where you're just like, hey, these are my interests. Like what other groups do you think I might wanna be a part of? I mean, we're getting ahead of ourselves a bit because right now there's only, there's, you know, a handful. But I know that Nikita Beer, you know, the founder of Gas App and TBH, uh, he accepted a role recently as the vice president of uh, or the head of product over at X.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the CEO got fired, so it's possible he's actually gonna step up into that role, which is quite crazy because I literally DM with the guy occasionally. Not, not all the time, but I've, we've exchanged DMs. Weird.
Compared to just multi-billion CEO.
Yeah, I know. Um, so he has a vision for X where you use Grok because Grok is built into their platform to be able to customize your feed basically to the things you're interested in by prompting Grok because it's all text based and Grok has that whole you know, database at its arms length. So um I know ki- they're gonna take their app in a similar direction where you form groups with people who share similar interests. So the future is in having AI in your products. Like there's just no question. So we should probably start moving in that direction and start doing the training as soon as possible.
I'll do some preliminary research. I don't want to take all my time, but uh I think it's something that with, with the training of it and reinforcement that we can definitely divide and conquer.
Yeah, and Chantel, if you can start making really clear notes on every little feature, that would be really, really helpful, but they have to be super, super clear.
If you did it in ocean, that would be like, yeah, I don't know if you use notion before, but I've seen a lot of big startups do that.
I wish I trusted Grok more because you could really just grab screen recordings and start explaining it and dropping the video in there and it would be able to follow along. And Grok four is better than ChatGPT four for now. I, I just signed up for it over the weekend. It got smarter, which is scary. Um, I was able to one shot a web app.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's getting good. Um, I'm still not at that spending rate yet on my AI stuff, but getting tempted.
Yeah. Um, I crest open AI a little bit more not to like leak sensitive information whereas with Grok, if it serves Nikita Beer and Elon, they might just grab everything we share with it and start copying features. All right. Well, for now, Chantel, if you wanna start documenting how the app is used very clearly, we can use that to train our chatbot for an FAQ. And then Jerry, one of the things that I think people would, if they knew they could use it for that purpose or in that way, they might say like, hey, does uh, you know, Todd have any movies I might like? And have it be able to pull those from the database.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, that would be um usage of MCP and all that, but I'm starting to get more familiar with that kind of stuff. Because MCP basically write out your own scripts to like interface with your database and get stuff like what you're saying.
Yeah. So model contacts protocol.
Yeah.
I could probably also use chat GPT to make sure that my instructions are very clear and like written in a nice way.
Mm hmm.
For sure.
Okay, one last little thing unrelated, but uh, I brought this up to John. I just wanna kind of keep poking us about it. Um, something that we'll probably need to work out on the front end, a little bit of the back end is um embeds in chat. So once we get to a state, I would like to start seeing like rich embeds in chat. So like if somebody posts a link, I know I talked to John about it Friday and he, if you send a link, it would be like if it was a YouTube video, it'd be like, oh, do you wanna create a topic on this link? Uh, but something that I'd wanna do that we'd need a special integration for is for group chats. So when Zane's trying to get people to join a group message, he's like, just drops the link in the, in the, in the chat and it's just like this weird circle dot com slash campaign group slash invite code slash yada, yada, yada. It's just a lot of text that is just, I guess, it doesn't make clear sense to what it is. And what I'd like to start seeing in the chat is just like a bubble. Instead of a message, it's a bubble that's like join the maggot army with eleven thousand people.
I agree. That would be really cool.
Yeah. I don't know where it stands on priorities, but as we start to, you know, you know, find people and you know, try to attract people to join these groups, that would be a, a lot better. I would say a lot more trustworthy. I mean, it's coming from a trustworthy person, but more of an idea of what they're clicking.
Agreed. And there's a lot more cross promotion that's starting to happen.
Exactly.
Yeah, one thing I've noticed from watching some of the Sentry recordings is um people trying to search for uh chat groups.
And we're gonna have, we're gonna have that in the newest build. The newest build actually does support that, Chantel.
Well, I can't get into fifty two.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I have been like, every time I try to do it, it crashes on me and I was even in production and it auto updated from a different account. And I can't get in to that. So I gotta uninstall and reinstall and do the whole thing. But yeah, I can't get into fifty two.
What about on an iPhone?
Hmm, I don't know about my iPhone. I would have to try.
Okay. Yeah, try it on iPhone, but we do have when you're searching in that chat compose, you can uh you can like search for a group by name and if it's a discoverable group, you'll see it.
Oh, only by doing a compose?
Like if you hit that plus chat?
Uh, that's not very clear. I would expect a search bar. And I think that's what people were looking for is a way to type it in that way, like.
But where are they going? Like add friends?
I think that I would, if I'm, yeah, I've seen people do that, go to add friends and search for uh, like one I looked at was UFC. That went, I went search people UFC and then tried to do like Josh Emmett. And like then went to it and then went back and tried looking for UFC again. It, the person you could tell was very like trying to figure out how to search for it. And it wasn't until a while where they were able to like scroll through to be able to find it at the top.
Yeah, actually, that is something I, I can recall that's on the roadmap. Uh, I know it with John on that, but there's something like on a user profile, there was gonna be a tab to where you can see like all the groups they manage.
Hmm.
So.
How, how is it set up right now, Jerry?
Uh, how's what setup?
Search.
Uh, search, so you hit the plus chat?
Yeah, I think that might be what I would do.
So to find a public group chat?
Yeah, unless there was a search bar at the top of the chat.
Yeah, that's what I feel like is a search bar on top of the top or the public group chats. Cause you know, something might be like twenty deep and I don't know that a lot of people really wanna go twenty deep. Cause you can only see like what, three at the top, four at the top?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't scroll to the right.
But what do you mean doesn't scroll to the right?
Oh, you mean like the, that's all you can see without like a pagination or whatever?
Right.
Guess it's not really pagination, I don't think, because they're all preloaded there, but without scrolling.
Yeah. I just feel like it's an extra obstacle. Especially for the new user who's not used it before, doesn't know anything about circles. I would actually expect it that if I go to the search bar, that I'd be able to search for uh public group chats. And have it come up that way.
Which search bar?
Um, either the one in the center of the wheel or the one at the nav bar. Cause if I wanna search, that's like, that's the point of search of magnifying glass. I would wanna be able to search for public groups if I knew that they're, that's a thing with circles.
All right. Well, we'll have to talk that one out. I do think there should be a way to search the chats. I would imagine, I mean, what I would expect is at the top of the lobby to be able to search them somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it needs to stay within chat.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. All right. Well, what else, Jerry?
Uh, I think, I think I've said enough.
All right, thank you. It's mail.
Hey, so yeah, yesterday or Friday, I finished up the screen for sharing profile and now that's part of build fifty two. So if you go and click on share profile screen with um on your home screen, you should be able to see a QR code and should be able to copy it, share it or invite people to a group you're in. Um, one thing I had about that score, yeah, one thing, one comment I had about that is the wording of invite them to chat, which I was like, okay, the word dumb is a little confusing and I was showing it to my wife. So I was like, oh, look, this is like the last screen in Bill, yada, yada. She was like, what's this? Who's, who's dumb? Like, who, who are you inviting to chat? Like, did I share this with anyone yet? So kind of the same I comment I had at the beginning of this. So I don't know if it's just me and my wife or if it's a little confusing when it says invite them to chat when you, when you just clicked share profile.
Yeah, I've not seen that yet. Uh, Chantel, have you seen it yet?
Yeah, I was working with John on the design. I think it's pretty much done on that. See the post in the investor chat.
Hmm, okay. It's just like I said, it's just a comment I had. I don't know if like it's valid or not. I'm not a UI UX expert.
I also had questions about it. I didn't think it was very clear. Um.
It's sort of like if we say invite your friends to a chat or.
Yeah, did we not change that language? Thought maybe we did, but.
Yeah, but them is a little like confusing. I would say.
The, if we changed that language.
You mean in Figma?
Yeah, yeah, it is still them. Yep, you're right. I agree. Invite embrace your friend or invite this person.
Well, you, we, we
A join.
Anyone here. So it has to be.
So I think here, when you click on it, it would take you to like the members screen to be able to add someone in.
If you click on what?
Uh, you know how if you click on main chat and then you go to members?
If you click on main chat, why are we gonna go to member? Like, so you.
It's if you're gonna invite them to a chat. Or maybe it copies.
Well, what happens right now is that it, it, it basically copies a link.
Okay, yeah. And then you send it to them that way.
And you can just send it where you want.
Oh, and I think, yeah, I think that the um, we're gonna do a toast with it that said invite link coffee to click.
Yeah, I had that in there.
Okay, yeah. But yeah, I think the initial step could be more clean or clear.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess just the, maybe the wording. Um, but yeah, that's, that's just one comment I had. Um, I, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because like my wife literally had the exact same comment when I first started the screen. Um, but other than that, um, yeah, there was the bill, the problem with the uh, what was it? The hardcoded key in there. So I changed it and created another build, which is build fifty two now and it should be up for both iOS and Android. Um, one more thing Chantel talked to me about was somebody was trying to add a unlisted service and they seemed to be stuck. So I looked into that and I was not able to reproduce it. Like, so that code hasn't been touched for over a year now. And it does seem to be working. At least when I tested it, um, has this happened with anybody else other than this person? Like, is, is, is this a common problem that popped up more than once? If you know, Chantel?
No, I wouldn't say it's a common problem. I feel like I've heard it and seen it before, like once before. But that was months ago, you know, like it's not been any time recent. I thought maybe she was having um an issue with her account because she was just having so many problems with so many different things. So I had her uh uninstall and reinstall. Um, and I don't remember if it actually fixed anything, but she did actually come across some legit bugs that we needed to get fixed. So that was nice about that. But yeah, I hadn't seen that. I didn't have that experience when I tried it out.
Mm hmm.
And it's hard to say with these like side things because she was actually trying to do it for a friend, you know, and it's like, I don't want an investor who's trying to promote the app for a friend to feel like, oh, she can't even do this.
I see.
On her own phone. Like I, I understand that frustration. It, it kind of gives a bad look, you know? But also, we don't wanna be spending days co- like chasing down ghosts. So.
Um, well, I mean, I looked at the session replay and I looked at the logs and there wasn't any API, like all requests returned two hundred, which means it was a success. And then the next step should just be for the app to navigate basically. Um, which it didn't do. So hmm. I mean, it's, cause like I'll submit, we call the API and then we navigate with the data, but the navigation is not kind of waiting. Uh, there's no wait. So it's, it's, it's not really waiting for the API to finish calling to navigate. Um, so technically, if I just pass an empty array here, um, we're not passing anything at all. So let me see something. Um, unlisted, which we go to places and then we do and test. Okay, so yeah, so I just like passed absolutely nothing to the, like, what I'm trying to say is uh, when you click the button, it just takes you to the next screen. And let me think. So does she, did she have any errors? Or I think, let me review the just replay. I, I, I didn't see an error in terms of like the fields. They just say required and she does have them filled in.
Right.
So there should be nothing blocking her, like when she clicks on submit approval, she take it to the next screen where she should select the category. But the only thing that can block her from going to the next screen is that one of the missing fields is not there, which is not the case, because all the fields are there.
Yeah.
So yeah, that doesn't make any sense. Why she was, why she was not able to navigate.
Yeah, when I was on the phone with her while she was trying to do that, she said that she got the feedback, the button feedback, letting her know that she letting her know that she did touch the button. And you can see where it just kind of just like scrolls to the top.
Hmm.
Or flashing, this is not
I'm just getting all the fields. And valid phone number, website. Yeah, I mean, it, I filled it all with, like I said, it's all seems to be working, like there's nothing that should block her. Um, if she had an invalid website or phone number, I would let her know. I just tested that. So yeah, it's, it's a really weird bug. I, I honestly have no idea how to reproduce it, and she looks like she's on version two point or forty-eight, which is our latest. And she's on iOS. Um, iOS version eighteen point five. Eighteen, yeah, that, is that the latest one? That's a, yeah, eighteen point five, so this iOS version. Yeah, I mean, everything looks fine, honestly, so it's weird that it didn't go through. That makes no sense to me. And there's no, like I said, there is no network errors and the thing is it doesn't even rely on, which I don't know if it's honestly good practice the way it's coded, like looking at now, we have the data and we net, or I guess we don't make an API call, wait, sorry, yeah, on submit, we don't actually make an API call. We navigate to the next screen, then it probably make it later down the line. So yeah, there's no API calls here at all. Hmm, not so sure. I, I have no idea why. It's, the, the, everything, like looking at it code-wise, that should have not happened. Like, there's no explanation that I can think of. Um, can you please let me know if she still has that problem? Like after she uninstalled and everything is good or there?
Yeah, so she did that after she uninstalled and reinstalled.
Oh, this was after and still got stuck?
Yeah, she did it before and then I had her uninstall and reinstall and she still had the problem.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, so if I go and fill in that exact same information and it goes through, then that would make no sense.
Yeah, that, that was something I did. I was, well, I also did it on my Android, so I would have to check iOS, but I did put in all of the same information that she did.
Let me see, let's say user key did not, for whatever reason, pass. Yeah, even if user keys not fixed, like this, this, what I'm trying to say is it really, it, it has nothing to do with with, with, with anything in terms of like user key account, like this is just click this button, it takes you to this place with that information. That's like all it is. Like it's, it's, what I'm trying to say, it's a very simple function. There's no fancy logic in doing that. And cause it to freeze.
The only thing I can imagine is that whenever I tried it on my phone, it did not register an actual click until after the keyboard was dismissed, and then once I dismissed the keyboard, then I was able to click the continue button and it brought me to the next screen. That's the only thing, only way I've been able to reproduce it.
Hmm, well, it looks like her keyboard is dismissed on the screen recording. Um, so let me have my keyboard up, so now I have my keyboard up as called, like click on. Yeah, so when I click on it, it doesn't register until the keyboard is dismissed. Okay, and then, eh, oh, wait, I guess we don't see the keyboard in the screen recording, do we?
Um, unless you see everything pushed up, but yeah, I don't think
It is pushed up, but there's no keyboard. Ah, I see. Okay, I think you might be onto something.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, once the keyboard is up, this should dis- disable the keyboard, which if it looks like in her case, it's not disabling the keyboard. And then once it's disabled, she can click on that button, but before it's disabled, you're not allowed to click on the button. Hmm, yeah, I think that's what it is, Jerry.
And I think she said I'd, I'd have to go back and check the uh recording, but I think that when she tried to do it again, it cleared out all of the fields. So it wasn't even like she could just edit it too.
From a new app session?
No, I mean, like, it would, um, she'd try to submit and I believe at one time it cleared all the fields, so.
Android or an iPhone?
iOS.
iOS?
Yeah.
That's really where I'm starting to think user error.
Yeah, here's the session, Jerry, if you saw, let's see, but um it's going to be burning, but yeah, I think, I think what I'm noticing is that she was trying to click submit when the keyboard was up.
Yeah, iOS eighteen point five and iPhone twelve, yeah, that's like really stupid comment.
What's that? Sorry.
I, iPhone twelve, iOS eighteen point five, like that's really common.
In terms of?
Like device usage.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Like they're not on iOS sixteen, they're on latest iOS, iPhone twelve, not the newest, but fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely reach out to her and see if that
Wait, no, actually, so I can see here that the keyboard eventually does get to see disabled. So on the screen recording, when does she click on submit? I, I think I see when she clicks on submit here. Um, let me see. It looks like she's typing a phone number. I can't see the keyboard, but after she's done, somehow the submit button always has a circle over it as if these are clicked it. Yes, it's a little confusing. So it looks like it was like frozen as she enters the website. And the keyboard does, and then the keyboard does disable. Oh, I think, wait, is that, is that when she hits submit? Yeah, it looks like she hit it once and then the keyboard disabled. But then, so when she hit it the first time, the keyboard disabled. So she might have thought she submitted it, but instead she went to fill out the street. Does that make sense? And then she goes, and now the keyboard is up, but it's not showing on the screen recording that it's up, because it's showing that she's typing all over the screen. So there's a problem with the screen record there. And then she scrolls up. Okay, I'm not sure, but can you? I think she, oh, I think every time she clicks submit, it just dis- disables the keyboard and she might, and she doesn't probably click it again, maybe, I don't know. Um, which maybe is a bad functionality on our end. Like, I don't know if that was intentional or not, but maybe we should have the submit button actually submit, even if the keyboard is up.
I mean, that makes sense to me. Unless it's grayed out, then I would assume that's the only
It's not gonna be, that also gonna make sense, because they would think they did something wrong, that they need to fix a field, which is not the case.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, maybe we make that button clickable, even if the keyboard's up. Instead of hiding it, because I, I think that's what's happening. I think she's clicking on it and the keyboard's up, and then when she clicks on it, the keyboard goes down, she thinks she clicked it. And she's like, oh, nothing happened, and she tries to maybe edit something, right? And then she's kind of in that loop where she doesn't know that she has to click it while the keyboard's down.
Got it, yeah.
It's the only thing I can think of, yeah. But yeah, I'll, I'll change that, honestly. I'll make it clickable, because it's, it seems like something that I would do too.
Yeah.
I expected this, I meant. But yeah, other than that, um, I'm honestly up to date on the um tasks, so if anything, um, you want me to start working on anything new other than this? I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, Ismail. Um, Chantel, are you aware of anything else that John wants to get started on?
I have one little thing.
Yeah, what is it?
Uh, remember Ismail, how when you would come back from the background and the discover feed would get refreshed from the backend, even though you're in a chat? Is that addressed?
Um, from chat, right?
Right.
And you're like in chat, yeah, that should have been addressed. Is it, isn't it still happening?
Oh, no, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I should have addressed that, that and what was it called the other screen? The um the home feed also, you should do, if you had visited the home feed too, it would do both. Um, but now I've tested on my local and um it's, it stopped making the API calls, uh, so I, I would assume it's all good. If, if not, let me know.
Okay.
Chantel and Todd, are you guys able to test the most recent build fifty-two?
I can't get in it now.
Why can't you get in?
Like, it crashes when I try to get in. I've, I have tried uninstalling and reinstalling.
On iOS or Android?
On Android.
Wait, crashes?
Yeah, I put it in development, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have to check that out. Um, are you able to on or open the app, Todd? Fifty-two?
Actually, I'm, I'm installing fifty-two right now. Give me just a couple minutes.
Okay, um, let me see, um, where's, let me give my Android as well, I wanna test it.
Okay.
I'm not having a test, but I can test it from my local.
What'd you say, Chantel?
It was Saturday, not yesterday, but I had the same issue this morning.
Alright, sounds like we know where Ismail can start for now.
Yeah, um yeah, let me see what's going on there. Um, and let me to, let me know, Todd, if you can get in or if it does the same thing.
No problem, just
While Todd's doing that, uh, let's go to Amin for a minute.
Uh, yeah, so, um, Friday, I was working on the Snapchat, like sharing uh badges. And what's the other one? It's in the other screen, like, yeah, we should, we should
I just got an email, by the way, from Snapchat saying that the uh Creator Kit, the app got denied, so we're gonna have to go back and see what can be improved there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, and um, maybe they need like more details about like what we're trying to um achieve, why we want the API. But yeah, I was working on the sharing, um, if a user tries to share a badge or sharing a favorite, that will open Snapchat with a story, um, with that badge or that profile. All of that is done. There was one thing that I couldn't get to work, which is like to have the link as a sticker. Um, yeah, I, I couldn't get it to work, and when I did some research, uh, research, it seems it's not possible. It was before, but like Snapchat somehow like it stopped it. Uh, I'm not really sure if it's, this, this is the case or we were doing it before. Because I'm using their API and their API, it has this thing, it's called attachment URL. And if you pass the URL to it, it should be there, but it's not, even if, like, there's a URL there, so I'm not really sure what's changed from that, but other than that, like sharing works.
What's the image URL you're passing as?
Not an image, like a, a, a link, just a, I'm just doing a Google, so, eh, so eh, like you share like an image and you can uh add the URL to that image, like it's gonna be a sticker.
I see.
So I was like, maybe it's the domain name or something like that, and it's improved. I was like, okay, let me just do Google. And then when it's not there, so, and I did that research, it seems like they stop uh allowing like other apps to share to Instagram with a link. Everything about it makes sense, because like you're sharing a link on another app, they don't want their users to leave their app to your app. But I'm not sure if this is the state or if any one of you folks know any other app that's gonna do it, that I can look into, see how likely they're possibly doing it.
We should make, we should make a circle Snapchat account and have it linked to that account too. I wonder if that would, well, no, we're sharing group links, sure.
Well, like, uh, i- it's not about the link, uh, what's, what's, what is the link? Just like you can have links inside the story from, from that, from sharing from another app. Um, yeah, that, that was it, and also, um, I went back on, um, I'm waiting to react native. Um, yeah, I like, I picked up again that branch, because I, I started working on it, on upgrading React Native to the latest and everything. And since there was a lot of change to development, I need to make the developments, uh, like I need to make that branch sync with the development. So it was like a lot of merge conflicts that I needed to um take care of. And also, um, I did upgrade, um, the Laffy to the latest version and it seems okay. It's only some, I mean, some Laffy's, they is weird, like, they look smooth to me, like, but it's not like as they are. But yeah, that's, that, that's different. I, I don't think that I want to broad, since we're gonna be upgrading to the latest React Native. This is for Ismail and Wells, like we need to stop using Recall because Recall, um, is not maintained anymore and it's not supported for the latest React, ma- React nineteen. And so, yeah, in a new world, um, that we're gonna be doing, uh, I, I mean, in my branch, I used the, uh, I like, I migrated from, from Recall to Jedi, which, like, they are the same, like they share the same API name and, and concepts and a lot of things. So I think that's what we should be starting using, so the migration be easier, like, uh, more and more. Um, yeah, that's, that's all for me, and also I'm like, I'm, I'm not sure, should I like the, um, yeah, and like the status of this work of upgrading React Native, the app now it's built and everything. But there's some crashes happening here and there that I'm like hunting and, and fixing. So I'm not sure, should I like, uh, work on this, on this week to get it done, or is there any, uh, other like pending high priority tasks that I can work on?
I would, I'm sorry, I think I have one for you, um. The library, you added the Ellen ext- uh, extension for the break.
Yeah.
That's what's crashing Android.
That's what's crashing Android. Uh, well, this, this, it's only supposed to be for iOS, let me see what's
It says cannot find native model.
Can I make, oh, I see what's going on, um, yeah, yeah, I see what's going on. I can't fix it. It's like, that was only to be for iOS, so when it's run on Android, it's, it's crashing. I can fix that.
Okay, yeah, but that's, that's, that's just, yeah, that's just the, that, that explanation, Chantel and Todd, why Android is not working, so after he gets that up, it would be working.
Okay, I'll Okay, I'll, I'll fix it in a few.
I would say, I mean, until we hear from John, proceed with everything React Native upgrade related.
Okay. Uh, yeah, um, Ismail, do you have any question regarding the recoil? Um, like, cause like we're gonna stop, we, we need to stop, uh, stop using it. It's, it's not maintained and it was like experimental from the beginning. And, yeah, so I use.
Fine by me.
Yeah.
So what was the one you used?
Jotai.
Jotai, okay.
Yeah, it's like simpler, it's, it, it's like, e- even like the names, like, um, share the same name, Athen. If you wanna create a new state, you call it Athen, so it's the same as a recoil. If you wanna have like the value, just you, they, they're following the same concepts of recoil, so. It's gonna be easier to pick it up. It's not like a lot of things.
Okay, I mean, yeah, that's, that's fine by me, as long as it's not. Like, cause like, um, we, that being said, we probably have to refactor our current states, no?
Well, that's what I did, that's what I did in my branch over, uh.
Oh, you refactored all the re- the. Oh, well, that one's gonna be, um, tricky to test, though.
Yeah, I know, I like this, it's gonna be a lot of thing to cover and to test and, cause, um, um, yeah, there's like a lot of, also like the fast image, um, it's not supported in the new React Native too. Like with the React, it's not, it's not gonna work, so I had to use expo image to.
I mean, fast image is, uh, has been.
Is there, the, uh.
Yeah, it's been that.
Yeah, and also, um, I had to use expo image, which is like, um, it's fast, it's nice and everything. It has, uh, the latest of everything, so, um, so that's like only like I'm migrated from, from libraries that, like I was like, I have to, so like, there's no other. Also, also the Laffy, the.
So you're gonna have all those in one branch?
Yeah, it's a huge.
Uh, uh, okay, uh, I was just wondering, is that a good idea? Should we split them into different branches to like test them? And you know, slowly, it's cause like if you change everything at once, it's.
Well, because like things are related, like, you can really, like, if I just like upgraded React Native without like, um, um, like for example, migrating from recoil, like, if you're not, you're deleting that library, the app will not build. It will not, um.
Correct, well, correct, I guess what I was kind of, the way I was thinking about is, we, you, do the, like, for example, the recoil, uh, migration separate, the fast image migration separate and the React Native upgrade, that's at the end. You do that separate after we test the first two changes.
You know, I think that's, that's good, just like, this is to isolate any problems that we might face. And then just we know, like, we, yeah, I think that's a good idea, I think that's what I, I do, cause like, I have like now shipping, not shipping, like to our Q A B L and be like, what's breaking it? Is it because of the new React Native or because of like Jotai? But like this, we're gonna be sure what's, why it is, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Okay, cool, then, yeah, cause it also will be a lot easier to, to review it.
Yeah, I know, yeah, like, I mean, I had to touch like a three hundred files and like, the, like the files in themselves, there not a lot of changes going on. It's just like every file I had to go there and, uh, rename, like, uh, like import from recoil, I'm doing import from a Jotai, like that's the most of the changes. But still, uh, cause like when I was like, just testing the app myself, like some things they are not working as expected because of the state. There's something wrong with it, since now we're using another library and everything, so, yeah, that's gonna be required a lot of testing, but yeah. The, the way how you, you said it's, um, I think, I think it's, uh, that's how I'm gonna do it to make things easier for us in the future, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Has anyone heard from Amet?
He said he was gonna be late, he had, he had company over.
Okay, good to know. He, last time I heard from him was Friday and I didn't see that message. I know his dad was having some problems, so. Alright, alright, so, uh, I, I mean, at what point do you think we'll be ready to start like testing all this on React Native? I'm sure you have a little bit of work to do still.
Uh, I'll say like, like, um, three days max or four days, like it's still in his works, it's not like, uh, ready, ready, and that's only iOS, like I was like only testing iOS, so I still didn't even try with the Android, so, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure that'll have its own set of headaches.
Yeah.
Alright, now's a good time to continue down that path. Alright, so, uh, the Android is crashing because of this Linux library. Are you looking into that, Amin?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go fix it, it's easy.
Very good. And then Ismail, you said you need something else to work on?
Yeah, I'm free. I'm just, I have one, the only submit button thing I need to finish up, but then after that, I, I can take on more tasks.
Okay, is there anything John has sent you over Slack or anything in the last few days that you haven't had a chance to start on?
Uh, it's a good question. I can go back and review it, but I, I don't think there's anything pending, I don't believe so, unless there's something I forgot about like a while back.
Okay, Todd or Chantel, is there anything John has sent either of you recently that you know, you know he wants, uh, the front end to take a look at, but just hasn't wanted to do?
No, I have, no, not, not from knowledge.
Okay, I'm only asking, cause, uh, with me hopping off standups early and working with Zane and sending out push notifications and stuff, I'm, uh, I'm not sure what direction John wants to take it in from here.
Okay, um, I'm not, I'm not certain either, other than whatever recent changes were made and, and, uh, the recent builds of fifty-two is the best.
I only have selfish things, which is finishing the rip. And then it's always on my mind.
Where, where are we at with photo tagging?
I believe we are testing it.
Yeah, it will be worse.
Yeah, it's only in two topics, the photo topics, I think in Bar West and nine one six guest list. But it won't work in any other topic right now or any other chat.
Is that only in fifty-two?
Um, I think it's in forty-nine and above.
Okay. And Chantel and Todd, you guys been testing that?
I know Todd has been.
Yes, I have been, and it is working, yeah, uh, it's gonna make some changes. Um, or we got help from Ismail regarding the SMS going out automatically, which we did get fixed on Friday, I believe.
Have you ran into any quirks then? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say one more thing to test that, um, I don't know if it's been brought to, you know, everyone's attention is that we changed how we upload uh, media to chat. We're using a different library, we use a different method, so let's just make sure also that's all smooth, if you guys haven't.
Wait, what, what version?
Um, this should have, this should be in the, in the last three builds. It should be all there, so like forty-nine, I think, or fifty, fifty-one and fifty-two, it should all have it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be sure to test one.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Wells.
Alright, hello, everyone.
Hello.
So there was a PR, uh, approved merge for changing the rendering order for the winner circle, as I mentioned. So now the name of the winner, we always be on top of all the other, um, rings on the winner circle. So even in smaller screens, uh, the name should be readable as per Shantel's design. So, yeah, with that, I, I don't think there are more changes in mind for the winner circle so far, so it should be all good, all these minor little tweaks and, and, and stuff down there. And right now I am, I, I was about to open a PR for the, level navigation for the badges, for switching to the badges tab. But I was using recoil here, which I mean, just mentioned, we should not use, we should use the new state manager. So I will be refactoring that first, uh, on the, on the new state management. And be making sure that everything works fine there, so we will have navigation for the level screen on level, uh, four. And that makes it so level five is all covered, level six is half covered. And I will start working on level six next, adding the navigation to the trusted photos and the, the cares. And also, I do have a question for John, perhaps if he's here.
He's not.
Oh, he's not, yeah, I see, only then, yeah, so I'll ask that later perhaps, but then you do remember, um, where should the trusted photos level take us?
I don't think that was discussed.
Okay, yeah, I could, I could sorry, it was, cause I thought it would take to the photo staff, but John actually had another idea. I just don't remember what now, uh, I'll have to ask him that later. And yeah, also, I, I'm, I'm planning on working next and have, uh, some time on the couple analytics requests you made, Danny, regarding the adding an event for when the user sets a profile image. And also setting the user level in the properties and amplitude.
Okay.
Yep, and I think those are my updates.
Okay. Chantel or Todd, do you remember where John wanted it to navigate when you click on the, uh, trusted photos option under leveling up? He's gonna show you.
Yeah, so right here on level six, there is this trusted photos and. Yeah, I think John had an idea on where this, this button should take the, the person, the press, but I don't remember right now.
So as far as tapping that and taking you to or navigating away from this to the trusted photos, is that what we're talking about?
Sorry?
Yeah, e- each time you click on one of these buttons, it takes you to show you how close you are to hitting the next level, so like the streak would take you probably to the streak screen. Where's check-ins taking you?
Uh, check-ins take you to the, uh, search.
Add more check-ins, okay. And then Wells is saying that they had floated the idea for having the trust tip photos one navigate you to your photo section on your own profile. But then there was another idea thrown out and I wasn't part of that conversation, so I'm wondering if anybody remembers where John might have wanted to navigate.
I, I don't recall. My, my first thought was just the trust, you know, the trusted pro, uh, photos in your profile. I don't know what the other navigation option was.
Well, there, there's innovation that there are other, there are stuff I can do, but it's just getting a little bit ahead and, 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 and I'm wanting to map the entire level six, but I don't have to do the cares first and all the other stuff I just mentioned is standard. So no, no problem, that's, that's not an issue. Um, we'll, we'll talk to John when, when he's back and, and float the idea here. I also thinking better now, I don't think we agreed on what this should do. I, I believe we, we, we let this to the future, so. I think, I think that that's not in settled, that's why I don't have notes on that. I think that's it, so I don't think we, we have an idea in mind, but that's, that's something we gotta discuss. So, yeah, then you think, that is on my end.
Okay, thank you, Wells.
Thank you.
Do any of your PR need to be looked at by anyone else?
Uh, no, sir, uh, everything is murdered right now. The one that I will be opening, I will send to both Amin and Ismail in a minute.
Okay, might be, um, something for Ismail to work on. When do you think he'll have that ready?
Um, hopefully in an hour, an hour and a half, depending on, on how the, the reflector goes, I still have to, to double check, uh, a couple, couple of stuff here.
Okay, when you finish it up, will you let Ismail know?
Yes, sir, and I mean, I did send you a message on, on Slack. Can you please send me the name of the state manager you just mentioned? And yeah.
Yeah, um, that's what, what I was allowed to answer, like, um, I'm creating a PR right now where I'm like, it's gonna be, uh, having that state manager library installed. We can merge that PR, uh, first and pull dev again, so we all have the same, uh, like, um, the, the similar with the same version, cause maybe when you're gonna be installing it, you're gonna be doing a version and when Ismail is gonna be installed, it's gonna be a different version, something like that. So just like for this, I'm creating a PR right now with the, our library. We can, we can merge it in all, in all branches.
Sounds good, can you, can also send me this PR so I can take a look into how you are using it?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll send you the, the library documentation, it's strictly, uh, for. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, I mean, is there anything Ismail can help you with?
No, no, I'm good.
Let me see if I can find anything John has sent me that might be front end.
I mean, if you can check out that Snapchat review, um, for that creative kit, I don't know what form they're referring to. Um, I, I don't know if we just have to add some verbiage of some sort that says we have an age gate of some sort. But I'm not sure if I had a chance to look at that or not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to the dashboard again and see what's going on there for finding, uh, forms that we need to fill.
Okay, thank you, and of course, if you need some help, just let me know, I'll, I can resubmit.
Todd, you sent something on July eleventh to the dev channel about how you were experiencing a strange situation in the Play Store version forty-eight for Android about on the People Finder screen? You said. You said, when looking at my contacts not yet in circles, I can't scroll past the As, I get to the end of the As and it restarts at the top of the As. Did you, uh,
Good question, I think, I mean, was that something that you were working on?
Yeah, that's fixed, that should be in the, uh, the latest.
Okay, I'll, I'll test it out, thanks, thanks.
And then you also sent one about tagging external users on a photo as a two-step process. Has that been investigated at all?
Yeah, that, that's, that was fixed back on Friday, if I'm not mistaken, and that was tested and is working.
Okay, cool. I'm still scrolling to see if there's anything that was sent that we might not have addressed. Was he were saying the winner circle one already got merged in?
Yeah, there should have been. If, uh, are you talking about the feature itself or a specific branch?
Um, the feature itself, I was wondering if he, if he, uh, merged it in at least to where it, it's been reviewed already. By someone else.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I remember it was in and then we had a bug where, uh, with the Z index and that, that was fixed. So I don't know if there's anything else.
Okay, um, last week, John had, uh, sent a message to the dev channel about how we had discussed grouping some of the preview cards. Has that been looked at at all?
That's
What was that again?
That's be a fun one. I I don't even know where we where we can start with it. It's gonna be. I I understand what John is looking for in a way. But as far as like programmatically handling that, that I don't know, that's just a that's a lot bigger ask than what I think he knows.
It might be. Have you guys talked about it?
In the past, not last week, but many weeks before. It's like you're you're gonna be like reordering messages. Like right now, our chat is chronological, but he wants to reorder the messages where these uh, these preview cards get grouped. But like this is enough, like this would be completely reworking our chat's pagination because of how previous messages would work. It's just it's a lot. I don't have any ideas that he could think of for this because the front end would have to be heavily involved on this.
Okay, has uh, are Ismail, are you aware of that problem? What what I'm talking about?
Hmm, partially, like I know it he wants to group previews. And we group stuff like maybe maybe if we grouped different messages, like these people, somebody has joined the group, uh, like I wonder if that would be something to help with this that we have like uh, how we're grouping the notifications, if we could group these messages perhaps?
That would be a good thing to work on because there's a lot of times where people are joining groups in mass and it would be nice to group those together a bit.
Yeah, I wonder if there's anything I could do with that or if that would or if that could screw up the pagination too.
Would that all be done on the backend?
No, I mean, we're we're gonna have to check it. What what I'm saying could be done on the backend. But um, I mean, we're gonna have to run it by on the front end and make sure we're not messing anything up by doing this.
What were you saying, Chantel?
I know last week we were talking about uh, music and trying to get all that done. Um, is there anything that front end can do before I get all the designs approved or no?
I think they need the designs for the player. I just submitted a application to SoundCloud for API access. So
That's where I was gonna go next.
Yeah, SoundCloud wants you to apply for apps. So I'm just waiting. Waiting to hear back in a moment.
So I'm going back to the the issue, I mean, with the people finder screen uh, scrolling, I can't scroll past all my A's or A names. Is that fixed in in production? I I'm I'm in production right now on the Play Store version and it's 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 not fixed there.
Let me let me see what's what's build it was in there.
Okay.
Because I know I fixed that. Try to set my um, which pill exactly. Yeah, that should be in the the fifty two uh, bill, which is the latest.
Okay, cool. I'll test it out. Thank you.
Yeah.
But it definitely should not. It's not working in a production version in like in the Play Store, for example, in forty eight or forty nine.
Oh, no, no, no. It's it's only in the late.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I was looking through the notes uh, that we have for the past couple days. Uh, so Ismail for that uh, invite them to chat. I have a note here that John wants it to be able to scroll horizontally and have it be in the order of uh, what you interacted with first, like or the most, I'm sorry, in that order. At the pop of the public ones, is that all?
Yeah, I mean, I it's scrollable horizontally and the order comes from the backend. So if they have it ordered by that, then it should be there. But yeah, I mean, if you guys have any task ping me, if not, I think I'm just gonna go and um, I wanted to look at a few things maybe to have our cards be a little bit smoother in terms of optimizing them to see if there's any possible way to help.
Okay, uh, John's just getting up to you, so we'll hear from him very soon. We'll ping you, Ismail.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, very good. He says he has plenty, so um, we'll be hearing from him soon. Chantel, what are you working on now?
Well, I'm about to get started on that. Okay, keep sorry, just took a bite of food. And I've got some emails, got some stuff to approve. Um, and then we'll be working on some testing. Oh, yeah. So I put in the um, in the chat with um, you, Todd and John, the update, the week under update. I just wanted to try to get approval for that so I could post it.
Yeah, um, is it just his updates?
No, he's he asked me to put it in my own voice.
Okay.
And he wanted me to like introduce myself and have it come from my account.
Okay, and you have a posting ability, posting updates from your account?
Yep, I do.
I'll look at it. Ismail, I'm just gonna drop something in the development chat here. Um, emojis are getting cut off on people's profiles here in the bio.
Okay, I see that. Okay, yeah.
And then John said, I thought we discussed uh, not showing the new button on other users' profiles, but if we do, exactly how does it work?
Not showing the new button, the shared profile?
Yeah.
Is it showing on other people's profile?
Um, yeah, it's like in John's case, he's looking at Lisa's profile here.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, my bad. Yeah, I see that.
And then also the drawer comes up too high.
That could actually, oh, never mind. I was saying that could kind of be useful to share people's profile, but then it do we have a way to share people's profile?
Well, the thing is, is we have to figure out like how it works, right? Because
Yeah.
Um, whose link is it? And then where does it take them? Then we gotta talk about deep linking to someone's profile.
Yeah, it's true. But yeah, yeah, no, I see. Okay, that's I I wasn't aware that it was showing on other people's profile. So let me um, make that change. Because I I added it to a common component. So, yeah. My bad.
Okay, yeah, I see all the other stuff I gotta do. I gotta work on the designs for the music stuff because I did get the documentation of what we can do from Jerry. And then I gotta do some cleanup on some of the designs because we've made some edit changes. So I just need to go through and make sure that's consistent for our designs too.
Okay. And then uh, here's another thing. Is Ismail, I sent you one where the drawer is coming up too high, but then there's also this issue where when you turn on pause notifications and you hit uh, until I turn them back on. It seems to reset back to default, which is always on.
Uh, is is that on screen record you just sent me?
Yeah.
So you go to notifications, you click on, wait, sorry, what did you click on here? Oh, until I turn it back on, okay. Uh, oh, it just says notification. Oh, and then it's grayed out or?
Which build is John in?
Okay, I can look at that API. See, I'll test all settings, make sure they're all working. I'll see if there's any front or backend errors. I'll ping it on it or Jerry. If needed. Because that one, I send the request to the backend and it gives it back to me. Yeah, just let me know. Hmm? Let me know. All right, sounds good.
Okay, it works for me in production, so this might be a problem in a newer build.
Hmm, yeah. Yeah, I'll I'll see. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's hmm. Didn't play with that code, but yeah, I'll have a check.
Okay. Well, that's enough to at least uh, keep you moving forward until we get more from John.
Yeah.
Cool. I mean, where did we leave off on uh? Oh, we discussed something the other day about, oh, yeah, we still have to figure out the Snapchat sticker for that to work, don't we?
Oh, I don't think there's a way. Uh, I was like, if 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 you know other apps that can do that, like share from that app to Snapchat with a link like uh, with a sticker. You know, yeah, the sticker should be having a link. So I like from the API, there's no other way to do it.
Yeah, I don't think the sticker will add the link.
Well, they call it a sticker, but like it's there, like, well, the the link so for the link to be like tappable, a user can press on it, it needs to be in a sticker. That that's what they call it in Snapchat.
Yeah, okay. So what the sticker, the sticker on Instagram is just the uh, the story post is considered a sticker, but the link is not considered a sticker.
Well, you have to put it in another words, like um, there's another way. I couldn't find a way to have a link inside the story. And for for Instagram too, like uh, I'm not sure if that's uh.
Well, yeah, uh, excuse me, I think they took uh, John was in build fifty one when on that notification issue, Ismail. Um, when it comes to the link, I I think they got wise to that when uh, Nikita Beer was doing it for Gas App and they removed the ability to be able to include a link. So I don't think you can include a link either.
Yeah, uh, it's like we're using the API and if it's not in the API, then we'll limit it to what they're uh, what they're um, um, giving.
Okay, we'll see what happens when we get approved for this creator kit too. Maybe we'll learn something new in there.
Okay.
Is anyone else in build fifty one? Todd, you just upgraded to fifty two, but yours is probably crashing.
There's no, a- actually in Android, I can't get into fifty one or fifty two.
Why not?
Don't know. I think uh, one of the guys is working on it.
Uh, yeah, we we I mean, already fixed that problem. I I just need to create a new build, so I'll I'll have that up soon.
Okay. Okay, very good.
I'll actually have that up now. I'll I'll start on the Android build right away. Or actually, let me, do you want, do you want to have it right away for testing or do you want me to have today's work in first? Let's create a new build up to you.
Uh, let's go ahead and get today's working first.
Okay, also I'll have it up by the end of day.
Perfect. Cool. I have a quick call to make. If you guys could stick around, I'll hop right back in.
Yeah, no problem.
Don't go anywhere though, because I might hear from John any minute now about something else that I need to bring up. So I'll be right back.
What is the size of a file that we can upload? In a group chat, like what's the biggest size?
A hundred megabytes.
A hundred megabytes, okay. Is there a toast that says that at any point?
It says that your media is too big.
Okay, but it doesn't give the size, okay. Was there a plan to roll out the admin panel for group chats outside of public group chats?
Yeah, once the the interface looks better and everything's published out.
Okay, thanks, got it. I have an idea. For the businesses that claim their business, if they gotta put in their physical address. Uh, what if we sent them like a circle sticker so that they can put it in their window or something?
That sounds cool, but I don't know the full logistics about that.
Hmm, okay. Cause um. I I see so many investors being like, oh, I wanna tell this business about circles, but. Like I I wanna have drop off materials like stickers or things like that.
I think for stickers that honestly they, it should be open to everybody. Like you should be able to go on the circle store. And just purchase a hundred stickers for like just the shipping. Yeah, like I, and if you're, and if you register, then we'll send it to you without shipping and all that. You don't have to pay for shipping, but I feel like, you know, the more stickers we can distribute, the better.
Yeah, that's kind of how I feel. And if people are wanting to do the marketing for us, like let them do it. But I definitely feel like especially the businesses that were signing up, we should be sending them stickers.
I I believe every investor should be entitled to. I I believe every investor should be entitled to, like a swag pack.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe Danny and possibly Ian might be the best to talk to about that, but I'm all for it.
I'm just like going through and writing the frequently asked questions and that was, that's a question I get a lot is. What can I do to help with marketing circles? How can I get stickers? That kind of stuff, I get that a lot, so. I'd love to have an actual answer for it.